I'm gonna ask everybody to stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me introduce the members of the zoning board. My name is Camper Chief, I'm the chairperson of the zoning board of appeals. This is the vice chairman, Bob Adams. Greg Logan is our clerk. This is Jason Quinn, who's a member, as well as Zach, Kara is a member. And our attorney is Marguerite Mitchell. And Roz is our secretary. Do we have a name tag for you?
No.
The people with the golden whip and balloon.
Kenny, do you sign it or no?
Ken right up underneath there.
So, on the new business is to review, discuss an act of sixteen seventy, which is Wellington Street for variance. Let me just explain to you a little bit about this case. This is a case that came back that we heard in twenty thirteen. And we initially denied it because it was shaped like a clock chopper. It wasn't something that the board wanted. Since then, they went to the conservation, as well as presenting, presented us with a different configuration of two lots. And we did indeed vote on that. The petition, and we approved it, petitions, petition signed. The petitioner had one year to register that decision. Unfortunately, their attorney, Mark Anton, who I knew from my prior work, is a very decent guy. Retired the next day after this decision was made and did not register with the registry of deeds. And secondly, the other issue regarding this case is that the engineer who developed the plans, Otis Dyer, had passed away unfortunately. He was a young man, sixty years old, I believe. So, that's why it's before us, because that expired, it was never registered, so now we're hearing the case again. So, basically, we're gonna be hearing the same facts on this case. We're gonna have three members appointed to this. We'll let the petitioner speak. We'll ask questions, and then he can respond to our questions, then anybody's gonna ask them any question that they want, so. Greg, could you pick out three members, please?
Yeah, I'd like to pick Jason Quinn, Ken Pacheco, and Bob Adams.
Just so you know, in this case, it was previously heard was Ken Pacheco, Bob Adams. We're very familiar with this case. And it was Peter Cameron, who used to be our chairman, is no longer on the board here, so.
This is sixteen seventeen?
Yes.
So, as you know, Ken, we've, we've heard this case before, so the board is familiar with the case. But if you can briefly explain to us exactly what you're doing, and then that way the public will know what's going on.
What we're doing is what we plan on doing, is we wanted to sell one of those lots. And future references down the road someday, either my daughter, myself, or a family member for the other. Again, it's because of, it's, for farming, it's not a good parcel. But when we went out there to do some, it was by accident. When we went to test for the cranberry barn, to find water, it was all gravel, so it was all really good materi-, you know, good ground to build a house, not for farming.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I'm getting, my wife and I are getting up in age, and we felt that we could sell one, just be, help us pay for some of the other bills that we are recurring, and so on and so forth. And what had happened was, Mark had turned the paperwork over to Odie to go file with the registry of deeds. And I think it was three or four weeks afterwards, he died. So, the whole time, everybody thought it was filed, and then when we looked, we found out it wasn't.
So, that's what's got you back, you know?
So, Marguerite, do you wanna add anything to this? I know you, you worked on this case, you offered the decision before we have questions.
I think just because this is a new petition, we probably should have the information about the hardship entered into the record. You can either discuss it from the last petition and make sure that nothing has changed, or in question, maybe potentially the petition recalls what all the different hardship pieces were. But I think it's just helpful for the board's record on this case to have that in there, and to address just the standards of the variance once again. You are using the same plan, is that correct? That you filed at the last time around?
Nothing has changed.
Okay.
And all the conditions that were done on it were?
All the conditions.
So, there was a condition to that decision about the driveways in lots one and two maintaining a fifteen-foot wide grass berm, and you're fine with agreeing to that again?
Yeah, so let me, one thing I didn't do was read the publication in the newspaper, so let me do that now. So, this was in the newspaper, it was posted twice, but for the record, let me just read it. "Notice is hereby given that the Dyson Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October eighteen, twenty seventeen, at seven PM at the Dyson Town Hall, nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, Dyson, Mass. zero two seven one five. On the application is an Ilex, Ilex Corporation LLC for a property located, located on Wellington Street, Dyson, Mass. zero two seven one five. Shown in assesses map eleven, lot number seven A and eight one A. For a variance decision pursuant to sections, article section two, subsection twenty six twenty, appendix B, table of dimensional requirements, minimum lot furniture, section six, definition of a lot furniture, the zoning board. In order to allow, if variance to allow, a billable lot to be created with less than the minimum required furniture, and to access that lot through lot furniture which is less than the minimum required furniture." And this is, was published by Rosalind Grassi, who was our support staff secretary, clerk, I should say. And it was, copy of this was given to the assessors office, building inspector, sewer commission, fire department, fire department. And was, a copy was also given to Gay and Gay. So, one of the hardships, my recollection of this case, one of the hardships was, if you, if you remember, was the topography.
Yes, the wetlands.
It would have been a financial hardship if we did not allow it. This wasn't a lot that was created, this whole lot was not created by you.
No.
Which, you bought it as is. And by us denying you the petition would be causing a hardship for you, which is financial. But it's because of the layout of the land, the topography, these wetlands there, if I remember correctly. Pizza's here.
I'll take a slice of pepperoni, please.
So, that's, that was one of the hardships. Anybody have any questions?
It was also an order of condition issued by the wetlands protection.
Yeah, by the ComCom, yeah.
Yeah, so that hasn't changed.
That hasn't changed.
We could, we could make a condition if we did decide to approve this, but it's not necessary because they are the ones that have to enforce that.
Yeah.
So, they've told, they've set up whatever conditions, we have copies of the conditions that they have given.
Well, Marguerite mentioned that there was a, the hardship would be the wetlands on it, and it is in the, in the first paragraph, the first page.
Yeah.
In behalf of us.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Rujan? Bob?
No.
Yeah, I'll say. Greg, do you?
No, I'm fine with it, as long as everything's mirroring the original one that we issued in the past.
Jason?
Just so I can get the lay of the land, since I'm the new, the new guy on the, on the case here, per se. So, we're looking at this, this here, and this is the access road coming in that they wanna, no, it's the utility access, never mind. Utility easement.
They got fifty feet of frontage on one lot, am I correct?
Okay.
And they're gonna have a driveway going.
Okay, and then?
They have a second driveway in the other lot. And is it four eighty, uh, four fifty eight, something like that, the other frontage on the other lot, does that sound about right? And we had a condition before that there has to be fifteen feet separation from both driveways. We don't want it to look like it's one single driveway.
Right.
And we have to put some barrier or something to show that it's not the same.
Okay.
That's all in this plan?
Yeah.
Can I, the question, can this be?
Yeah, but Jason is not familiar with this case as, as we are, so.
Yeah, can this, Marguerite, can this, the prior decision be entered into the minutes?
That would actually be my recommendation. If it's not already part of the record, we should make the prior decision a part of the record.
Well, I'll make that motion, it's be entered into the.
Is there a, is there a second?
No, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed, entered into the record. Do you have any other questions?
No, I do not have any other questions.
Zach, do you have any questions?
I do not, no.
Marguerite, do you have any questions?
Um, I just wanna, I just think it's helpful to confirm that, other than the variance for frontage, that's the only variance that you're requesting for lot two. And all of the other conditions of the zoning by law dimensional requirements are being met.
Yes.
Okay, and then my understanding still is that there was, at one point in time, an, a buy right plan approved, an A and R plan for this property, that would have resulted in a brook crossing.
Right.
That would be substantially more impactful to the wetlands than what's being proposed. And that's still the case?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, nothing's changed with regards to the layout or the topography of the land, since you do that, the board has.
None, on the dimensions, nothing's changed.
All the questions, questions from the board, I think you're here.
Correct, yeah. For instance, Chris Affely, seventeen thirty Wellington Street, I've ordered the property on the western border. So, as before, you know, I certainly have concerns with the water table. You know, my driveway is presently sinking, based on the water table being high. I actually have a culvert that runs from Kenny's property across to the eastern side of mine. I have eighty-five feet of frontage, if, I don't know if it shows the full lot. My lot looks like a flag. I did, was in contact with the prior owner of my property, who actually received a variance to cross the wetlands there. He also recommended that there be a condition with putting together a pre-construction notice associated with the Army Corps of Engineers. That was an organization that plagued him for about three years while he was in the process of building that property, based on the proximity to the Coles River. It's actually, depends on where you look at it. It's considered a regular river, it's also considered a tidal river. And he, that was part of the whole development process when my, my lot was approved by the zoning board to make it go through. So, I do have concerns of the water table. I also have concerns of, and I don't know if it's a zoning or a conservation with, you know, basically, now I have a corner lot with, you know, two large driveways and a green space in between.
Well, it's already gone to conservation, and they come up with a plan.
Right.
And they recommend that, that we approve the variance based on the new configuration of the lot and everything else. So, it's the least amount of impact that it has on the wetlands. And that was one of the concerns when, initially objected to the case, with the wetlands. But I'm not sure if, I'm sure they took into consideration where the house would be placed and how that would impact neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, I have no issue with the houses. I, I think, you know, they're great, they'll, they'll be right next to the, the solar farm, but, you know, my concern is that driveway and the way that my house is situated, you know, am I gonna get light pollution with cars coming up and down?
Well, based on what the conservation committee, conservation committee submitted to us before was, it was their general feeling that this was, rather than fill in wetlands, this was the way to access this property, that they wouldn't allow us to, allow Mr. Rujan to fill in wetlands when it was accessible in another way. Now, this says, definitely, the plan was worked out, I mean, this wasn't done in one, one session.
No, no, this is, it's like a year.
Yeah.
This was the best plan, and all that's happened here is someone, we have to.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I understand, I, you know, for the record, I might be here.
There isn't, anything else has changed, good and all.
I always wanted to.
You don't still stay with the same plan?
So, we need to ask you whether you are in favor of it or opposed to it, for the record.
As it is, I'm in favor of it.
Are there any other questions from the board? So, I'm gonna step down as chairperson and make a motion that we approved it. This petition with the condition that the two driveways, one on each property, be separated by fifteen feet. And it be some kind of a way to show that they're separate driveways versus almost a combined property. I'm not sure exactly how we worded it the last.
I believe it's a buffer zone of some sort, is it?
It had to be a vegetative buffer, I believe is how it's worded, Ken.
You mean like grass or shrubs?
Well, shrub, uh, well, I think it was really, we had to check with the fire department, you know, the fire chief.
Say what they, yeah.
Before it's getting, you know, like emergency vehicles in.
Yeah, yeah.
But you put white grass berm, is what it says.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But they wanted some plantings other than just grass. So, it gives everybody more privacy.
Right, that would be consistent with the bylaws.
Yeah.
Do you know of any place that sells shrubs and stuff like that?
Yeah.
I don't know of a place around here that doesn't, does that?
So, I stepped down and make that motion that it be, um.
And I'll second.
That it be a special condition, that there be a berm, fifteen feet berm between both driveways.
It's in this pre-approved plan?
Yes, I just wanna make sure that we continue to have that.
Yes, okay.
What about a berm on the butter side?
There is, you'll be up to, how far up to?
How close are you?
The driveway.
My motion's out there, but has it been seconded?
Driveway's gonna be about thirty feet.
Yeah.
I had seconded, but this is.
Lot seconded, okay.
The condition then?
So, any discussion, I'm gonna continue letting them discuss it.
It shows here forty-six feet.
Yeah. I don't see why they wouldn't wanna cut that or do disturb that.
At one point, it's less than that, but the back part of the, with the stone wall this year shows forty-six, it even widens out to sixty-five.
Yeah, it's a little bit larger than the previous.
It's fifty down here to the street, right off property, down to fifty feet. You don't wanna no cut.
Yeah, if you could do a no cut, that would be great.
I don't think they wanna do it, you know.
No.
There's no reason to do it.
I mean, that's for the wetlands anyway, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's no reason to mess with that.
So, we, does anybody wanna make that additional condition then? So, we have it on.
The plan shows that it's clear enough now, I don't know that it needs to be conditioned, but, 'cause that's where you're supposed to put you. You've got, you have to follow the order of condition from conservation.
You have to follow from conservation, yeah.
So, it's already there, Ken.
Yeah. Any other discussion on this case?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed. Jason, could you give us the reason why you're in favor of this decision?
Um, it was, it was per the, the order of the conservation, the conservation committee. And we have the, the condition for the berm in between the two driveways, and for the hardship too.
And you, Bob?
Well, because it was pre-approved prior to this, and the only thing, it was, everything had been worked out prior. And if they're gonna follow the same plan, and it's, the board members discussed the petition, it's written in this thing, representative opposed the location of the driveway, confirmed that each lot will have its own driveway. And all of the conditions that we had are, were met. So, I see no reason why to not to approve it.
Again, I'm also, because we had agreed to this before, nothing's changed in the lot. It was, the lot was created way before they bought it, and so they had nothing to do with making the lot smaller or anything like that. So, that's basically why I'm in favor of it, so. I'm gonna have you sign an extension, so it'll give us time to have the decision written up. I'm gonna have you sign it.
Give you time to save up the money to get it, and call it as fast.
So, Marguerite, how much time should we, uh?
Um, when are you meeting again?
Meeting in November, but I'm not sure what exact date is.
Fifteen, fifteen?
Fifteenth.
Fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
Should be able to have it, yeah. I was thinking it was when I could have it, that meeting.
Everybody thought it, oh, it's a side office, he did it. And that was, we found it, found it in his house.
So, the sixteen thing, is that what you're saying?
It's, it was. Huh? Isn't this kid so bad?
Yeah, I should definitely have it for that, if not.
The father's alive, the son doesn't wanna pass away.
The son's alive. Oh, no kidding?
Yeah, father's like ninety-two or nineteen or something like that.
Oh, my God, when did that happen? I didn't, I haven't seen.
Two thousand thirteen?
Just have been in Sweden. I think it was in the late fifties? No, I probably, I just thought it was the father, not the son.
I think, I think that's what you'd expect, right?
Huh?
That's what you'd expect.
That's what I, I just didn't, I just haven't. That's giving them more time.
Marguerite needs to bring it back to speed on the criminal litigation.
So, we're giving it to, on November six, uh, sixteen, that we have, that we have concerns. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you also concerned about the solar, is that something you're?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they're gonna have a meeting next week, the planning board?
Yep.
Have a meeting, so you have to work.
No, it's not next week, it's November first.
November first. Where is this going?
Yeah, I just, I just talked to Tom Piers, and I had two people here waiting to hear about that, and I told them, next, uh, next Wednesday at six.
It isn't the zoning board for the.
Yeah, no, but they, they thought that it was gonna be heard, so it came in here.
No, wait, it is, it is, uh, no, it's not next, it's November first, next Wednesday is conservation.
Yeah, next Wednesday's conservation, they might have filed.
I talked to, no.
ComCom was tonight.
But it's, when it's, that's a commercial solar farm, right?
Yeah.
It was the planning board, now it's.
Right.
Right, but planning board had a meeting tonight that didn't get hosted in time, so these people thought that there was meetings.
Okay, we're gonna.
Okay, what's next?
We're gonna do all business. On the case on Pleasant Street, if you remember.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Did I close the public hearing on that?
Thanks, Ken.
You're in a good spot.
I did not.
Can I?
That's a piece, right?
Yeah.
Can I take one of these drawings?
I don't know.
I just had, or just take a picture?
This is what I need for the file.
It's the same one I think I have the original picture of, so.
You wanna take a picture of it, John, or I'll take a picture?
Yeah, I think it's the same, yeah, it's the same one I have.
Okay, record, right?
Yeah, I don't need it.
This is where you were saying, your landowners, this is where I drew the marks from, so there's, there's plenty of distance.
Yeah. Correct.
So, okay.
Yeah.
All right, this, okay. So, continuing around with the meeting, I'm gonna make, step down as chair, and make a motion that we close the public hearing on the case that we just voted on.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed. So, the next case we're gonna, on the all business, is the case that we had on Ple- Pleasant Street, fifteen dash seventeen. I was a voting member, Bob, you were voting member, and Greg Logan was a voting member. This is the lot that they wanted to build a house in, determined that they could not build a house. So, we've got an email on September twenty-first saying, I am withdrawing the application, so not expect you to hold a hearing in October. So, I wanna entertain a motion that we accept the withdrawal of that case.
Okay, I'll second it.
Uh, Bob, I'll step down, make that motion that we accept the withdrawal from that case, and so, Bob, you said you wanna second it?
Okay, but I want that entered in minutes too, so in case you, 'cause we're supposed to act within so many days, right?
Yes.
You file it out.
So, before we even, no, I'm not gonna close the public hearing until we've won this, so.
Okay.
So, you made a, I wrote, I made the motion, you seconded it, any discussion on it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed. So, I guess I'm closing the public hearing on that case. I make a motion, step down, make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed. The other question is, he asked that the fees be refunded to him. And in the past, we've, have done that, when somebody wasn't eligible to go forward. I, personally, I'm in favor of it, I'll make a motion to that effect. It was a, he was, he put the, paid the money, he didn't do his research on the bylaws, however. Uh, but he did pay the money, and we weren't able to give him a positive vote on that case, so.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna make a motion that we refund the seven hundred and fifty dollars that he spent for the fee for this application.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
Uh, we, before we move, I have a question that, that this is discussion.
Yeah.
There was things brought up at that, uh, meeting about what is allowed and what's not allowed, and that type of, I think, can we discuss that now?
Can we?
Close this.
Close this, and you, yeah.
Oh, you close this first, and then we'll discuss it afterwards, right?
Any other discussion on that, my motion? No? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no opposed, motion passes. Well, there's an bylaws that tells you what you can, what you can't do, and I think I.
But I wanted to address the whole board on the matter.
Yeah, no, Jim, I get.
I researched it.
Yeah.
But I researched some of that, but, because they said that a special permit is allowed by special permit. So, I, when I researched what exactly a special permit is, and it, there has to be some kind of need for a special permit. We, in open space recreation, there would have, there are certain things that are certainly allowed. But the things that you have to address is, what is the need? Is there a need, is there a need for it? And that's, well, you have to ask yourselves that, whenever that comes up on any other case in the future, is there a need for it? Because we've had other cases in the past that have, not in that particular instance, but were, were special permits. There obviously has to be a need for something. That's all I wanna say about that.
I'm not following the logic on that. I mean, someone's coming in, asking to build a house, and say it was a billable lot by special permit. What would, what's the need?
Well, in this particular instance, when I refer to this, this is open public meeting here, right?
Yeah, yeah.
This particular instance, this man came forward with two five hundred, two five thousand square foot lots. And there was reference was made to the possibility of a bed and breakfast. Now, is there a need for a bed and breakfast in that area down there? Okay, now, you face the same decision with a five thousand square foot, or ten thousand, ten thousand square foot lot, minimum amount of, uh, thing for it, that is, is not frontage, but the minimum amount of bed and breakfast has to be four bedrooms. So, then you have to have someone else, and now you've come up with five, five house, five bedroom lot. With, now do you have parking for the size? Now, then the question comes to you, is there a need in that area? Is there something that's drawing that down there? Is there a amusement park of?
Baymont Park.
But Baymont Park's on the other side of the river.
Yeah.
I mean, is there a need, like, when I looked it up on, in this thing, if it was, there wasn't any gas stations, in that, we already have one. But if there wasn't, there was a need for a gas station, could that be allowed by special permit? Certainly it could. But then again, it wouldn't be on ten thousand square foot lot, you'd have to provide parking, and then throw, throw in storage and stuff on it. The question I was trying to bring out is, there has to be a need for a special permit. In other instances where we've allowed this, the lots were formed, a lots or a lodger, and they were allowed by special permit. But there has to, there has to be a need. Did I make myself clear? Or am I barking up the wrong tree?
No, you may be, no, you may be barking up the right tree, I'm not sure, but is it a need that the petitioner feels there's a need?
Does, but in the interest of the town, to meet a bed and breakfast in the park, that's the.
Some people might say, is there, there's a need for that?
Well, the question is, do we, do we have any bed and breakfasts in town?
Wait.
So, they may, maybe.
Then the thing, the proposal comes in to the size of the lot, okay? Now, here, on something up, there was, now opens, in the sixteen years I've been here, there has been no homeowner's permits, or single-family permits issued in that, in that area. We have approved lots that were pre-existing, and which is, it's, by law, you kinda have to. I mean, there was an issue with that one with the Rogers home, where the guy had to go to court, remember, and he got the proper.
Yeah, but in these sized lots, if it was a residential, they'd be allowed to build a home there.
Right.
That's like, you know, fifty feet of frontage.
Oh, in the residential area.
The res, but this isn't residential area, so.
No, it's open space recreation.
So, we couldn't even, and we can't change the use of the land, so we, we have to deny.
And that was why zoning, zoning was put in in the first place, was to prevent the encroachment of, taking away these open space recreation areas. That's why we, that's why zoning was put in.
Right, that's, and that's why, yes. So, we couldn't give them a house, but there are other things he's able to do there. And he is, he or she has a right to come before the board, petition the board.
And then the question comes into need.
And, I'm not sure if it's only need.
That's what's special permit.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll take a look at that, but I'm not, maybe you can help me with this, Marguerite, I'm not sure.
Oh, that's what it says here, I, I, you know.
Yeah, no, I'm not questioning you, Bob, so I just.
Look here.
Get some clarification.
I think whenever you have a special permit application, you follow the criteria that you have in your bylaw, which talks about finding that the benefit to the town and the neighborhood outweighs the adverse effect of the proposed use.
The need.
Which, the need pieces, that's kind of the essence of what you're getting at, Bob. So, you have to make that finding, and then you have to take into consideration different characteristics, which is set forth in your bylaw. So, I mean, it's a finding that has to be made, but it's, special permits typically tend to be more available for petitioners to obtain approval, provided they meet the different considerations, and there isn't some sort of safety concern, traffic, parking concern that are, is in place. I think a neat argument, if you're going to try to deny it based on that, would be that there's somehow, you know, five hundred other bed and breakfasts right next door, and there isn't, there's something else that would be needed. But when you're really looking at a piece of land that has limited use as it is, you've really gotta be thoughtful in addressing that finding.
With that being said, you get to the condition where you go and you look up special permit, okay? In an open space recreation, the minimum amount of square footage is thirty-five thousand square feet, minimum, that you would be able to issue a special permit on. That's what, that's what our bylaws say. Because I didn't, I came here tonight not knowing that they were gonna withdraw their, their, uh, permit. But our, our guidelines, if you look it up, I have it here, and it shows, open space recreation, minimum lot size is thirty-five thousand square feet. And something like this doesn't.
Min- minimum lot size for what, though?
A single-family house.
But they can't build in open recreation, they can't.
But, but I mean, if it was allowed by special permit.
No, but it's not, though.
So, it's not?
No.
It's a single-family house, so.
Single-family house cannot be built.
A bed and breakfast.
Boarding house, whatever it may be.
There are a lot of stuff that they can come forward.
Things like that. It says.
I think you brought up the example of a boarding house.
Dimensional requirements, okay? So, I looked over here under the, the appendix B. Permitted, other permitted uses, open space recreation district, okay? Now, it shows that there's a minimum lot size of thirty-five thousand square feet. You have to have a minimum of hundred and seventy-five foot frontage. You have to have a minimum of hundred and seventy-five foot frontage sent, sent back from the street fifty-five. That's in an open space recreation area.
Yeah, but then, this, if you have fifty feet of frontage, and you have five thousand square feet of land, and it was zoned as a lot prior to, we get the bylaws, it's a buildable lot. However, because it's open recreation space, they can't build any houses there. So only, in the past, we've had people fix houses, expand the houses, we found our hearings.
But no more permits have been issued.
We've issued no permits to build the house.
No barriers, is it?
Well, I, not new, we can't build new houses.
Well, we did that garage.
We did a garage, yeah, but I'm talking about, and that was.
Right. There were other houses, Bernie Miranda came in with different ones, but there were two lots on an existing dwelling, he would do the, the, who was it, uh? What did they call it, help me out with that, that we had required him to get a, as-built.
Yeah, because it has to be so high, so high, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Everything has to be so high and all the rest of the requirements that were done, and they're built to today's standards for safety reasons. But that was a previously existing dwelling, and these weren't open lots. That's the only thing that we've done down there. There was another one further down the river too, that they had built a beautiful house.
But it was one existing there already.
Two lots. There were actually two lots, he put the two of them together.
I know that one.
Yeah, all right, I was just trying to educate us all.
Yeah, no, no, I'm in favor of that, doing that. Uh, so the.
Well, we have new members here, so.
Yeah. Uh, so, on the old business, case twenty-three dash zero four, the Pines. The first item we're gonna discuss is release of lots. Now, uh, they have, if you remember, we allow them, that we, we agreed to hold two lots and gave them permission to build houses on those lots, but we held those two lots. And it's my understanding, and I have own, uh, elaborate on that, is that they, they're asking for one lot, uh, to be, uh, released. Just that, they have a house booked on the other lot that they're not asking to be released, and this lot here is an empty lot, and you're gonna, you're, you're asking to be able to build a house and sell it.
Yep.
So we have to look at the cost, the, to complete estimate, we got a, you, you just saw it, I guess, from the other.
Yeah, right, yep.
So we got a, uh, so we got a letter, dated October twelfth from, uh, GZA, uh, Peter Williams is the engineer. Dear board, uh, board members, as requested by the project developer, GZA, Geo Environmental Inc., GZA, has prepared a revised cost to complete and estimate for this property. The estimated cost to complete amount is sixty-five thousand dollars. See attached estimate, and was based on inspection and completed work on October fifth and October eleventh. The cost to complete estimate includes construction and survey costs required to complete the work on the approved as well as the twenty percent contingency. The unit prices utilized in the cost to complete estimate are based on current last uh, average bid price information. Prior to further reduction in the cost to complete estimate, the developer should submit evidence indicate that the board of, the Titan Board of Health has approved a search disposal system for all houses. Now, so you have any questions concerning the information presented in this report, please do not hesitate to contact this office. You know, just handed a, a letter.
That should be written to the record now.
Yes, I wanna read that, so that, uh, I asked for a motion to have this, uh, letter from, uh, Peter Williams, intended to.
I'll make that record.
I'll step down, second that motion, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, no oppose. So we got it, I, we have a letter that, uh, is dated October sixteen from our attorney, Marguerite Mitchell. I haven't, just for the record, I haven't seen this letter, so.
Sorry about that, I didn't hand it to you.
Yeah, no, that's, I'm just saying, I, I haven't read it.
That's okay.
Doesn't change the letter.
As requested, I have an opportunity to review the above referenced form F one submitted for the upcoming October eighteen, twenty seventeen, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I also have the opportunity to review the October twelve, twenty seventeen cost to complete estimate of Peter Williams. I am not in possession of any field inspection report since the last report I have received for the, for the prior request to release lots, which was reported number nineteen, dated December second, twenty sixteen. Finally, I again review the copy as of permit decisions, conditions applicable to this request, particularly condition twenty-three. Form F one appears to be properly drafted for presentation to the board. Additionally, the developer has submitted a blank form, one that can be used by the board should assume that releases of lots other than those being requested by the developer is warranted. The developer is requesting the release of one lot, leaving one lot to be held by the town. GZA has confirmed that the cost to complete estimate should be revised to sixty-five thousand dollars. It is therefore appropriate for the board to reconsider releasing additional lots in, in the development. At the time I last reviewed this, the cost of complete estimate had twelve hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. At this time, since December twenty-first, twenty sixteen, the board decided to retain two lots. As you know, the planning board analysis related to the release of lots from the covenant follows a formula of ninety thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand plus one lot. As the cost of complete estimate is now sixty-five thousand dollars, the application of the planning board form would result in one to two lots, uh, continuing to be held, need to be held. That, thus is my recommendation to the board to approve the release of no more than requested one lot, if it believes that a reduction of fifty-eight thousand dollars in the cost to complete estimate warrants a further release of lots at that time. As you know, the intention of, of this performance guarantee is to ensure completion of the site work on the property, so the board's decision on retaining lots should be with this in mind. The board may also want to consider discussing with the developer if an alternative type of guarantee such, such as a bond is, or still will be appropriate, so that all lots can be released. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions, as always, I appreciate, appreciate your continued confidence in my services, very truly yours, Marguerite Mitchell. Do we have that form one? I think you were talking about that thing.
I, I have a copy of it that was sent to me, that I had printed out. I was gonna say, I do not have. Oh, I think you sent it to me once, because I would have got it. I forwarded it to you, but I haven't gotten it. Okay. Did you bring one with you?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you can make a copy of this if you want.
Okay.
Um, you're gonna need me to notarize this, right?
Oh, you can, no.
Or are you in order?
No.
Put the last line, obviously, yeah, so.
I can go out to my car, nevermind.
Let me just get the, I wanna get the form on that, so we have everything.
Yep.
This is a, do you want both of them made, or are we both, are we going with lot nineteen, that's the one that I do want?
So, uh, yeah.
The other one was blank.
That was if we made any changes from the one.
Yeah, yeah, on lot nineteen, that was being requested.
So I'm gonna step down and make a motion that we accept this letter, and put it in the record.
I'll second.
I'll second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, no oppose, or we're gonna turn it to the left.
I can be signed, or be the boss, or, oh, okay. There's a, well, I sign.
Good members.
Okay.
What? We have a good thing going membership.
Who's talking about?
Good, it's a good point.
I think we're probably.
Good point.
That's what I had.
Yeah, before I, uh, read form F one, could directly complete board members to make a decision on this.
Yeah, uh, Zach Kirin, Rob Adams, Ken Chico.
Okay, so this was submitted, I guess we don't have a table on submitted, but, um, from the office, well, this is the form that, um, they filled out. Then they signed, being a majority of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Dayton, this has not been approved yet. Uh, may I hereby certify that the requirement for work on the ground called for the approval of the covenant contract dated November nineteen, twenty fourteen, and recorded in the Bristol District, uh, registry of deeds on December eighteen, twenty fourteen, book number twenty-two zero four-two, page nineteen, and settle out, I hereby release for the restriction as to the sale and building specified thereon. Lots designated on set plan as follows, lot number nineteen has been released from set covenant, and then if it's approved, I sign it, you sign it, the clerk signs it, and the other, uh, two other members will sign it. Majority of the zoning board of appeals of the town. Uh, okay, so. So they're requesting that one of the two lots, uh, be, uh, released, and it's still locked, when they say it's still locked, it doesn't have the house in it.
Actually, both lots have houses on the, yeah, both of them have, we, we, because we wanted to get, um, before we finish the, the final coat on the road, we wanted to get all the driveways in, the heavy trucks in.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, so both lots actually have frames.
So when I, when I drove in from Pines to, uh, Stony Ridge, those houses were already there, you know, okay, okay.
Mm-hmm, yep. Yeah, it's right, it was a small, yes, exactly, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so the lot that the board, so we're requesting one of those lots be released. The other one has a house on it, but the board was, so it actually is, you know, the lot plus, you know, foundations, set to frame house, all nine yards.
Yeah.
Um, our intention, actually, this is the first time I saw Peter's costume complete, there are a couple items on there that are done from there, but that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, I, our, our goal is to actually get it all wrapped up, except for maybe street sweeping and a couple other things, and then ask for the last, release the last lot.
Yeah, I was at, uh, Stony Ridge today, and I noticed that trees were being put in, in pines, in the pines, so.
Yep. And actually, they weren't on his list, which I'm surprised, because they're not on there, but, uh, we, yeah, they're it, so, yep, yep.
Oh, okay. Yeah. But they're in. I, I see things rapidly, uh, working out from there. Uh, I know you have a question, or you want me to address it?
It's up to you, I'm not afraid.
I know you're not, that's.
Okay, once we pass the money, and we'll lease them all.
Because we're almost done, it, it doesn't seem, you know.
Yeah, but you'll avoid having to come back in and all tie us all up, just come up with a.
Well, I, we're gonna have to come back to do a release of the, well, right now it's sixty-five thousand.
How much money you take?
Sixty-five thousand, no.
Twenty, thirty thousand, which is balanced, which we're gonna put in next week, so.
So, we're gonna have to, if we release this lot, when it comes to the next lot, we have to have the money that.
Right.
Right, we're gonna ask for, whatever the, whatever he tells us the cost of complete is, we're gonna be asking, we're not gonna release a lot without.
Right, the money.
If it's twenty thousand dollars worth of work, they're gonna have to give us a check of twenty-five.
Right. Right. Unless, unless everything's done, and we're going for road certification at the same time as releasing the lot.
But I just think that was money, that must.
So that's where, this was a conversation that, that, um, I think I had recently as well, and that's where the, the language in my letter at the end comes into play. The condition that's involved in this, this, um, type of performance guarantee was intended to not only have the guarantee with regards to building a property, but also a contingency for the town to have, should there need to be any fixes after the property is built out.
Oh, okay.
And at that point in time, back when this was permitted a long time ago, it was a ten percent contingency. The lot release, um, the cost of complete analysis has continued to decrease, um, the amount owed, and had the ten percent contingency, contingency calculated on what's left. But we probably in hindsight should have held on to that ten percent contingency as its own line item from the beginning.
Okay.
So, I'm not positive, and we can certainly research this, as to what the original amount was of the cost to complete estimate, but I'm not sure that reducing this any more beyond sixty-five thousand dollars makes sense, because we, the town needed that contingency element to cover. It's approximately a year, a little bit beyond a year past buildout. Should there be any changes that are ne- needed to be made to the road, or to sidewalks, or anything else that might happen in the course of, of a typical year after buildout? And then at that point in time, the final release would come. So, um, I think that it's worthwhile to just explore yourselves with the expectation that maybe the sixty-five thousand dollars, if the board tonight releases a lot, you may need to bond that sixty-five thousand dollars, or some other type of guarantee needs to be provided to the board. Of course, they want you to take this lot, they're not looking to keep a lot forever.
Sure.
But an alternative guarantee needs to be provided to cover whatever might be left, even if you've done the work.
Yeah. And that makes sense, when we get to the, when we get to that stage of doing the transition, and like I said, our intention is to build the house, have it all neat and done, and go for road, you know, completion. Um, when we get there, I mean, I, I think part of that is the reason that the engineers go out and review everything, to make sure there's nothing, you know, open-ended and, and left on the road, but we can definitely, whatever makes the board, you know, comfortable with the situation at the end. Our, the only reason to not do the money is because we're gonna ask for it back, and, or, we're gonna ask for, we're gonna be done with all those items within another three weeks.
Yes, but, but my point is that.
Right.
This amount of, or some amount of money, it will need to be provided, even though you've finished the work on that.
Yeah. Right. Right. That's just not why we proposed that tonight, we didn't, right.
So it's not, it's no longer tied into, you've, you've technically gotten your ten percent contingency all along.
Yep.
It's no longer tied, yeah, you're kind of, you were prepaid on that ahead of time, so now you might have to do some work
We're just down to that, right. Yeah.
that ultimately ends up being, you know, offsetting the ten percent contingency that should have been held. That's kind of where I think you're at.
Yeah, okay.
So, just to look at it that way, the town would expect the work to be done.
Yeah, when we get to, when we, when we go for the release of the last lot, that makes sense to some of them to discuss.
And for the, on this agenda, is there requests to have, uh, the road become a public road, so there may be some conditions on that too. I, I know, just speaking to, I think it was the highway department, uh, he's gonna want no parking signs along that, the road, because.
Oh, okay.
It's, as you know, it's.
Right, because that is limited on there, no parking along the roadway.
Yeah, so, there's gonna be no parking.
Yep.
Not just overnight, but it's gonna be, he wants no parking.
Yep.
I'm not gonna police it, but, uh, that's gonna be.
But he wants the signs there.
Yeah, he wants the signs there, so.
Something like that has to take place at the town meeting, though, doesn't it?
To approve it, but we're, we're gonna discuss after we resolve this, uh, may, perhaps have any hearing, uh, next month to, uh, decide whether or not we wanna remove, at least the conditions far as, uh, making it a public way right now, it says it has to be a private way. And there may be other conditions, I'm jumping ahead of it right now.
Yeah, yep.
So, on this, does anybody have any questions about their request to have lots, uh?
I have a question, it's realistically just a typo, I believe.
True. Uh.
On Peter Williams's front page, he has a twenty percent contingency listed. And on his, on his page of holdings, it has ten percent.
Yeah, the, I believe the, um, I'll look at it again, but I believe the condition only required ten percent.
I just want that cleared, that's all, because in the record.
It's true.
But let me just double check for you, I think it was conditioned, and.
Pick up.
Six thousand dollars.
It was ten percent.
Okay.
The board had the ability, um, if it had been more than two years since the decision, to increase that amount of contingency to account for inflation, but I don't ever recall the board taking a vote about doing that.
So at this moment in time, it's listed in there as a ten percent contingency?
Under, the condition required a ten percent contingency.
I just saw it, I just wanted to.
No, it's a good question, great.
Any, uh, further discussion on that?
I just have a question, just because I'm kinda new to the forty Bs and this whole thing.
Yeah.
So, we release, uh, we can release lots when the cost to complete has gone down?
Yes.
Is that it, okay.
So in, uh, Marguerite's letter, she said, uh, normally the planning board, it's a hundred, ninety to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
That's true.
That would be two lots, it'd be one lot, that would be the cost for the lot, and then it's an additional one lot.
Right.
But we're down now to sixty-five thousand dollars to cost to complete. And he has the right to ask us to release one lot, and we still hold on to the other lot.
Okay.
We'll be addressing at some point that other lot.
Right, okay.
You can't sell it, but it's just a lot nineteen.
Yep.
And this particular developer's performance does credit him, so.
Yeah.
So each lot's basically worth sixty-five grand, can you ever take roughly?
Well, it.
Well, it's got a house on it.
It's got a house, it's worth, it's worth, yeah, it's worth a lot more than, uh, the cost of the complete, so.
Yeah, I mean, when we're holding, when we're holding. Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
It's the advantage of the town, if they decide tomorrow they're gonna walk away from that project, which I don't think they're gonna do, it's so close, uh, to completing it, then, uh.
Right.
But this developer, if we're going forward, uh, he should be like a model.
Model developer?
He's done model, very, uh, really.
Well, they, this dev- now, we're offline here, but, uh, this developer, it's Ryan Ascend in Easton, he's the, the go-to person for any forty Bs. So if Ryan becomes the one for the government, it's my understanding, he's favored by Easton. And it's something that we may wanna consider in the future, if there's forty B coming to the town, or something like, and I suspect we may be hearing from them again, uh, forty B.
Well.
But, uh, leave that, I don't think. So, uh, was the motion made to, uh, approve this? I don't think it has, someone make a motion?
They'll make the motion to approve it.
One second.
One second, you're not a voting member, that's a sorry.
Any?
Okay.
And?
Oh.
My other, oh, it's Zach, okay.
No, it's me, yeah, yeah, it's me, but it's me, Bobby, yeah, yeah.
Oh, so that's right, that's right, my fault.
That's okay.
Did I write that down? Oh, yeah, it is, K P, K P B A N C C, don't worry about that, my fault.
It's okay.
I'll second the motion to approve.
Any discussion on that motion?
They even wrote it down, too.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, no oppose.
What's that? It's second. It passes, long day.
So, are we, uh, Marguerite, it's just to be signed, I know that meetings are usually half an hour, it's already almost an hour now, we're sorry, but they're probably.
Um, yeah, so you, the three members would wanna sign it, and I have my notar- I assume you need this to be notarized, so I'll bring my seal in after the meeting's over and just stamp it. But I'll take the affirmation right now, after you've signed it.
You have a voting now, yes.
Sorry. Put the date too?
I, I put the date on. Could you have it, send it to Zach, and go sign it, because you're talking about a voting.
Yeah, I know, I know, too much flying the last two days.
As a member.
Call base.
Okay, so the, um, the second case, involving.
Wait, I'm sorry, one second, the three people who signed it, was your free act indeed to sign the document?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, going to the second issue that you bring to our attention, acceptance of the road, right? So can you tell, uh, number one, uh, do you feel as a representative of the company here that this is a substantial change?
Aye.
I, I believe at the last, you, you came before the board to talk about this.
Mm-hmm.
That Fisher said it was a substantial change, so I.
Okay. I would agree that it is a substantial change. I would agree that it is a substantial change with with the statements that we made in the previous meeting, correct?
So, which means that we're gonna notify, yeah, it's gotta be publicized, the board is gonna be notified.
Okay.
We don't, do we have to take a motion to accept that, uh Mike, or we can just accept the fact that he's uh on record saying that this is a substantial change?
So, you haven't received any type of request in writing from them yet, have you?
I haven't received any requests as far as the conditions that they.
Just a ver- verbal conversation with the with the developers, so.
So, we would have to send a modification request.
Yes.
And then the board would determine if it's a substantial change, correct?
Well, so that's what we were trying to, we had a conversation about that, so you can avoid the step of the board having to have a meeting to do that.
Oh, if I just say that it is.
If in the request, you acknowledge and concede that it's a substantial change.
That is. Perk.
So, if you put that language into the request, we will avoid this meeting and just schedule for a public hearing, which I think is what you were probably hoping to try to do.
Into the. Okay. Great. Yeah, that sounds good.
So, sure, at this point now, uh we vote, the uh voting members for this?
Nope, you don't.
You go.
Right, cause I need to submit the request.
Yep.
Okay.
To you guys, acknowledging.
And assuming it has that language, if it doesn't have that language, then they'll have to put it on their agenda to make that decision.
Yes, to make that, no, it'll have that language.
But it makes sense for you to put that language in, correct?
Slow things down.
Right, yeah.
And then at that, at the public hearing, you'll assign whoever is available at the public hearing, you'll assign voting members from that, yep.
Okay. So, my question to the board is, do we wanna have this at a next meeting, or do we wanna have a special meeting to hear this case?
I would say next meeting, how's it?
Next meeting's fine with me, we've already had some discussion with the board, we're already known about this.
I have two potential cases, but they have not been, yeah.
So, this will be put on our.
I I just have to watch this, and she just two peren- two potential cases for next meeting, and that's it, so it doesn't seem like it's gonna be.
Good.
So, I don't have a problem with moving against it, next meeting.
Well, but nothing's been submitted yet, it depends on when they submit.
Yeah, it's gonna depend on when they submit. If you had said, oh, I know we already have five big ones, then I would have said, like, yeah, right.
Oh, do you know, yeah.
So, uh what date do we have to uh, yes, to submit the paper, by what date for it to be on the agenda for next, the next meeting?
My, October thirtieth, it'll be fifteen days.
No, cause I have to have it in the paper, um.
Fifteen days.
It's gonna be on the paper on the thirty first, I would need it by Monday.
So.
Twenty third.
Yeah, cause I gotta get it to the Gazette Tuesday for them to proof and get it back to me, but so.
We can do that, that's fine, yeah, that's easy for us, we can do that.
That's nice, sweet, yeah, okay.
But I'm not gonna be able to do that, and I think you want me to look at it, oh, definitely.
And we used to call them, we used to press them, they put them on the.
So, I'm not, I I'm not around to look at it, Owen.
Then they put it in the next day.
But.
I won't be around to look at it on Monday, not at town.
Friends of what it is, yeah.
Although, the, uh when are you, I mean, if I give it to you tomorrow or Friday, by Friday morning?
What if he gets it to you tomorrow? I can't, Friday morning would be too late, I have to.
So, tomorrow, what, what, by what time? By noon?
Tomorrow. Um, it, that's not gonna matter, I'm just, no, I'm looking at my schedule, I'm pretty tired of, I'm sorry, I just have to be, having like planned trips, so.
Okay, okay, all right. No, 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 please. Wait, it's, it's not a complex one, because only changes one, uh.
Changes a couple of conditions, and there's some waivers that are impacted, that.
There are, okay, so then I would need an attorney to review it, uh just to make sure we get all of the waivers correct.
Probably.
So, I, then I can't promise you that, you know, tomorrow news is a little tight.
And I don't know all of them either, so I actually was encouraging you to have your engineer look at it, so that you catch all of the waivers.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah. Yep.
Um.
So.
So, my suggestion would be this makes sense to do as its own meeting anyways, um and then you could just schedule it based on whenever it gets submitted and approved. Do you see what I mean? So, if they were to approve it, if they were to submit it, you could then reach out to different board members when you, or Roz could, to think about, here's the day we're thinking of for a public hearing, and we could just have.
You, so you you say not have it at the next.
Right.
I don't think that's feasible, because he can't get.
Given your situation.
Just stop it, publishing all that, right, hey, publishing.
And and his need to review it with different people. So, my suggestion is that when you get this done correctly, it'll be reviewed, and in the course of our review, we'll confirm with the rest of the board members
Yeah. You'll be able to let us know.
when you guys are available for a public hearing, and you can just set up a public hearing and publish it, and you won't feel that pressure of, no one will.
Right. And re- realistically, that sounds like the twenty ninth of November or something like, is the twenty second is, I think, twenty third Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
Right, that's Thanksgiving week, so the weekend, weekend after, that gives two additional weeks for us to get it, and then give it to you, and have you have plenty of time to review it.
Which gives you a little bit of, yeah, time to get this in. Yeah. That makes a lot of sense, if people are around on the twenty.
I mean, the board, I'm not gonna have a meeting, but right now, I don't see why not, folks wanna, would end up.
And we're not gonna be voting as to whether we accept or we just will.
So, this isn't just a letter saying this is a lot of fees.
That's it.
We'll be voting on the, on the waivers.
They actually have the waivers, that they're gonna be requesting. They need to look at it and make sure they're catching all of them.
Right.
And then you're gonna review it.
Shouldn't it, should it?
Yeah, they're identified, these are the waivers that have already been granted, so that we know this is what doesn't meet the town standards.
Yeah, okay.
So, once, right, once.
And then they're gonna request, there's two conditions that reference it as a private road.
Those. Exactly.
We eliminate that tradition, and the board's letting, and the planning board.
Right.
And then any plan, there may not be plan changes, I don't know, because when your engineer looks at it, they might be able to meet.
Right. Then there goes to the town meeting.
I, potentially, they changed the plans, which means some of the wirements, I mean, it may not involve a plan change.
Especially next week.
I'll talk to, I mean, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to them, I think the only things that might change is, there's something about the sign engine, yeah, right, and that needs to go on a plan.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And we'll. Yeah.
So, I think I'd probably have to, and that's another piece of it that gives us the time, so I'll talk to the highway department, say what, you know, obviously, we're not changing
No, exactly.
dramatic road things, but what are the things you'd like?
Well, that, that was my thought too, is some of the little bit of research ahead of time might allow you to put together a plan, if it's a slight revisions, that you're already bringing it in with
Yeah. Right.
from, with what the town is looking for, per um preliminary, at a minimum, and then they can have a public hearing to decide if this is gonna be approved, even with that in place for now.
All right, so Roz, I'm going to pin the plan and get you a notice sheet by the thirtieth of October.
That's a snowplow one, a lot of stuff.
Okay.
School bus.
Thirty, uh, sixth, is that what we're saying? Yeah, two weeks from this coming Monday, yeah, so the sixth of October.
Okay, then you need, when do you need to have it?
You get that in writing first, this is, you have mentioned some.
Cause you, actually, you need to review it, so I need to get it to you then the thirtieth, that's fine, we can do that.
Well, it's gonna go to you. Yeah, thirtieth of December. And then it'll give Marguerite here to get back to me, to say, okay.
Because you'll, to review it, and give it back to Roz, and then you can send it out, excellent.
Okay.
Twenty feet, yeah.
Okay.
Good.
And that could be done.
And if we don't, then then we'll, if for some reason it takes longer for my engineer to ensure that.
Right, then we're just into the beginning of the month, it's not, um, okay, you'll let me know what you're.
So, so when we send it to Marguerite.
Yeah, of course.
When we send it to Marguerite, actually, it's probably whenever she sends it to you, you need to have it, so whenever we send it to Marguerite, we'll talk about the date.
Well, we have a town, or is everybody off the road, they're gonna have to.
CC me on it, so I know this, so I'll look at it, you can look at it, and then.
Yeah, exactly, right.
All right.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so that we can hear the the case, and uh we'll schedule that appointment, we have all this information, she's okay with it.
Okay.
All I could work out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, on the old business, um review, discuss, and act on recording of decisions with registry of deeds.
Okay.
Our ministry assistant had approached me on this, the case that we had tonight, the Rujo's case, it was not registered. And uh she's offered that if we let anybody who comes, pushes the case and gets approved, that she, it's a, it costs seventy six dollars to go to the registry and and put that on the uh deed. And we're asking, we're gonna be asking any petitioner for additional twenty four dollars for the time that Roz has to do to go, to go there and register and come back. So, we're gonna be asking people if they're willing to pay a fee of a hundred dollars in addition to our seven fifty to have the town uh record it.
Record.
And I, I think it's a great, no, I wish we could make it mandatory, but we can't, uh but it would be great so that we know that it's been recorded prop, you know, properly, and we don't have any issues with these cases here, so I'm gonna bring this up at the next meeting, uh we can discuss it tonight if you want, but we're not gonna vote on it uh tonight. I want you guys to to think about it.
How much did you say?
It's cost seventy six dollars anyway to register it, uh because of the, at the, at the registry of deeds.
Oh, good.
Uh but we're asking for additional twenty four dollars to compensate the time that Roz is gonna have to uh record the registry of deeds and record this, so. We're gonna be asking any petitioner, once, or if this is voted in, for a hundred dollars and offer it to them, uh that we can register the case.
Okay, so I see, I see.
On top of the seven, on top of the seven fifty.
I see, I see, yeah.
Yeah, by the top of the seven fifty, some will do it, some uh.
It would only come into effect if it's approved anyway, so they wouldn't have to have it approved.
Right, yeah, right.
Okay.
If it's not approved, sometimes they'll give us the money, you know.
And it, and it's.
Well, that would, I mean, this would be an amendment to your fee by law, right?
I'm.
So, that would be something I'd put into your fee by laws to when you would want to have that money paid by.
Before she records it.
Yeah, what, what, what she's saying, I think what uh Mike says is that we shouldn't be asking necessarily for the money upfront in case we deny it, the will, the terms.
But.
Or maybe you, maybe you do wanna ask for it, and it, I, that's, that's part of the conversation I would have as a board when you look at the fee by law and the language of that.
And then, and then refund it.
Yeah.
Let's refund the seven fifty, yeah.
It's just, there's so many that don't get recorded, that.
But I, I, it's, we're just talking here, that's, that's, it's their fault.
It is, but.
I don't know that the town should, I don't.
Let's. Yeah, but sa- say, for example, they only record an affordable house, and put on the deed that uh this is affordable house, can't be sold as a market house, whatever the wording is.
That's a different thing, that's where the town becomes invested interest, the town has an interest in that, but in Mr. Rujo's case, we have no interest in whether it was recorded. Forty B's different, that's something we have to keep track of and maintain, I mean, not that, I I just, I haven't had time to to think about it.
And that's one of the reasons why we can discuss it tonight, but we're not gonna vote on it.
Cause the town really is a, uh, how do you call it, separation of church and state, they're, they're individual, but on forty B, I agree.
She's not going to church after she gets that done.
Well, she might have to, you're gonna wish you did, baby, who knows?
Well, there's no obligation, but I think as a service to the applicant, just to help them out, granted, if they don't wanna do it, fine, but.
Just have a record.
But if they do it themselves, they saved a hundred dollars.
Exactly.
It's gonna cost seventy six dollars, but how about, and this is no uh.
I don't, I don't think you can make it mandatory, can you?
No, we can't make it mandatory.
No.
But how about if we have, and this is uh no disrespect to attorneys, but the attorney says, I'll register it, so they're gonna get their seventy six dollars, and they're not gonna pay twenty four more dollars to register, they're gonna have all sorts of fees on it, so.
What if it's kinda like when you go to a hotel room and you put down a payment for like damage to the room, and then once you check out, there's no damage, you get that money back? Could be refunded, like once we know it's, once it's been, once it's, it's been assured, assured, it's been registered, we give the money back?
I see, yeah.
I think that's an accounting nightmare.
No, I don't think we have that, we don't have the authority withhold the money, give them the option of doing it, do it for all.
Okay. I just didn't know if it was more of a guarantee, or like an insurance, I don't know.
I don't think we can.
So, I would be careful too, when you're talking about fees, you have to make sure that they're.
Legal.
That they're really designed to cover actual costs to the town, so just, I think this is something that certainly, it's, it's a creative idea, but I think it's something that we really wanna be careful, carefully establishing that it's clear, there are, as much as you may wanna provide kind service, that's not the role of the town. So, if it's a service piece, that's different than if you're just simply offering a fee and you're, you know, it's like the abutters um doing the abutters maps or sending in the publication, the town does that and obtains the money associated with that. There are some towns that require the petitioners to obtain their own abutters information, and they don't do that for them.
Hmm.
So, that's where you've just gotta make sure that the work that you're doing is clear, that it's something that you're offering, but you're not, your fees are only related to the actual expenses.
So, that case, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't go into the fee by law?
It, it needs to be, it can't, it can't exist other than being part of the fee by law, but because it's part of the fee by law, it has to meet the standards for what a fee is allowed to be under the law.
Okay.
You can't exceed the.
Okay.
Right.
And I liked what Ken said about the forty B, that should be part of it, because we, that would be a vested interest of the town to make sure that that was recorded that way.
I go through the forty Bs, I see the signs for sale, now the house is already, it's already been one owned, it's still selling.
Yeah.
Who's watching to make sure that it's not a forty, forty.
You got a point, that's, that's.
So, I think you have separate fees for forty B projects, and so when you're looking at this by law, you might wanna also think about how you amend the fees associated with forty B
Good point, because I mean, I don't know that like uh having it as a service from the town is, I don't know.
Um, projects to.
Well, we're gonna vote on it, and the whole board's gonna vote on it, it's not gonna be free people to vote, you.
I don't know if I'm allowed to speak here, but one, only one piece coming from the other side, as much as it would be great to have Roz go and record things afterward.
Yeah. Yeah.
If an engineer gets stuff, something wrong on my end, or like a signature is bad on the sheet, I've had to chase stuff for days, you know, hunting people down,
Yeah. Yeah.
and it would stink if the town assumed the role of, hey, we'll go register this, or record it.
Yeah.
And, oh shoot, it's missing this block, and this block, and these signatures, and now Roz is responsible for running around and chasing down everything to get it done correctly. Um, you could just hand it back to them and say.
Could you do it, that the forty Bs were the developer's responsibility, and the um variance special permits were?
For all other cases, basically, right?
Yeah, yeah, I believe what you're really typically for forty Bs, what you're recording is just the decision itself. Or any modification to decision, you're not necessarily recording, this wouldn't be something, the zoning board is not responsible for recording building permits, or.
Right.
With the plant, the bylaws. Deals of individual lots.
Right.
Yes, that's all something that the developer.
I don't know that the town should be put in that position to do, to, to, to do this.
But it's a good point that you raise, yeah.
So, a lot, it gets involved, really.
The plans, yeah.
Right, but it's also, it's been brought to my attention also, that if we fail to register this, okay, uh one case, gets mixed up in the paperwork. And the year goes by, we're liable, we're gonna be, we're gonna be responsible now, because we, we messed up, so.
Who? See, guys don't see it. And we, we've had this happen before with other, other ones, we've had.
Well, I have complete confidence in Roz that that wouldn't happen, however, that's something that we have.
We don't always have Roz, there's not, there's only one Roz.
She's worth more than her twenty four dollars that we have here, make up on.
I just, I, I think our government is big enough to start off with in a town, I don't think that responsibility, uh you used the word, Marguerite, help me out with this, like this, uh, is uh you, like, it's, it's a kindness of the town to do this, I don't think that that's our position, that, that in a town.
I just feel bad, there's so many, like, little, like Mrs. Chater, like, she's old and frail, and you know, it's, it's a burden for her to go to the registry, so I was thinking if we could help them out, great, but if, I don't want it to be any type of.
Well, why don't you just put up a sign, I'll do this and take the money yourself, I don't know.
So, my question.
I don't, don't, I don't know that you can do this.
Still a camera, yes.
I don't want it to be any type of burden to the town, I was just thinking that it could be a service to the applicant.
It's only if a mistake is made when the burden falls back on you, on them, if you make it, make the mistake.
I have a question, so.
Yeah.
If the fee by laws, you said that should, they should um clearly cover a cost to the town.
It's a kindness, probably, I guess.[1594.84]